We move on to the next item on the agenda, which are interviews for Montgomery County Planning Board temporary positions. Just going to make a couple of comments up front and first express my, and on behalf of all of my colleagues, tremendous appreciation to all of the county residents who stepped forward and applied for these positions. It was a very difficult decision to get down to the 11 extraordinary leaders that we are going to have the opportunity to interview shortly. But for members of the public, there have been a lot of conspiracy theories out there, and I just want to allay those. This is, this has been an unusual process, to say the least, but a necessary one, given the circumstances that led to the action that we're going to be taking later this week to appoint the temporary board. But I think it's important to acknowledge that this is, the view of this council, that the members that we are going to interview this afternoon are going to be appointed to temporary positions. That does not exclude them from the opportunity to apply for the full-term positions, which will be advertised shortly after the next council takes office. But we felt it was important so that the planning board can continue its business, along with the planning department, and to recognize and honor the extraordinary professionals who have been caught in the middle of all of this, and also the important plans that are before the planning board right now. We sought the application of people, and we were so fortunate to have received the application of professionals who have a great deal of experience in this space, including former planning board members, including former elected officials, including people that work regularly in this environment, which has been extraordinary. And so because of that, I know I speak on behalf of my colleagues and having tremendous confidence that this board will build a bridge, and it is an entirely new council that will be determining who, if any, of these members are interested in serving the full term actually in fact serve the full term. Nothing is baked here. I just want to be very clear, nothing is baked here. This is simply an opportunity for us to get us through the next several months and so that the planning board can continue its important work. So with that, what, the way this is going to work today, as it does with every appointment process, is I will ask a series of six questions to three separate panels. My colleagues will then have the opportunity to ask one question themselves, and colleagues, I respectfully request that we keep to the five-minute rule so that we can get through all three panels and then go through a deliberation and discussion in the very short term. But I think that's important to adhere to. So I'd like to invite our first panel forward, Mr. Raj Barkuma, Cherie Branson, Francois Scarié, and Norman Dreyfus. Please come forward. Thank you again very much. So I'm going to ask, if you can, to limit your responses to around two minutes, but you know, that's not hard and fast. If you need to go a little over that, that's okay, but just so we can get through this in a way that makes sense. We will do this in alphabetical order, go down the list, and then reverse it on the way back. So, Mr. Raj Barkuma, we start with you. Thank you so much for coming today, sir. The first question is, what skills and experience do you have that is relevant to the work of the planning board?
I'm an architect and planner for 40 years, been principal of my own firm and a managing principal for design and planning. I'm a 40-year resident of Montgomery County, and I'm familiar with the process. As a former member of, a former national president of the American Institute of Architects, I had to deal with situations that were crisis-oriented. I took office three years after the 1994 recession, and the economy was in turmoil, which meant the membership was in turmoil. And so what we had to do was figure out, how do we stabilize the economy of the architect, for the architect? And so that's one of the experiences I've had. The other is I've taught full-time for 30 years in architecture and planning, and my degrees are in, education-wise, I have a first degree in built environment and architecture, a master of architecture from the University of Kansas on urban design, and from the University of London in architecture and development planning. And after I finished my term as national president, I decided that I had to do something rather than be the former president, and I went back and got a doctorate in sustainable design, which I saw as being the coming important issue, and that was in 1997. So I was ahead of the curve on that, and I bring those skills plus planning and experience to bear on this. I've also sat and presented to panels such as yours and Historic Preservation Board, the U.S. Fine Arts Commission, and other historic preservation and environmental groups, as well as being chair and juror for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Awards Program, the U.S. Green Building Council Awards Program, and the Anarundel County Development Design Awards Program, which I helped to initiate. So I have a fair amount of sitting on the other side analyzing what someone's presenting, as well as understanding how to do this through science and fact-based investigation.
Thank you for your response. Mr. Dreyfus?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Branson, you are next. We're going in alphabetical order.
Thank you. So, good afternoon, first of all. It's good to be here with you all. Let's see, as you all know, I was a member of the council, and in that capacity, I had the privilege of learning a bit about the planning board, his policies, his procedures, his practices. But I am by no means a subject matter expert. I have a certain proficiency. My expertise is in a few other things. My expertise is in figuring out how to fix organizations. As you all know, I came to the procurement office. It was newly appointed, but I came at a time when there had been multiple reports and dissatisfactions with that office. The council had set up task force, task forces, and, and there had been a good deal of public alarm with what went on yet in the county's procurement processes. Happy to say that I was able to, to change that office. I was able to make it responsive to the public. We streamlined procedures, we made it transparent, we implemented many programs that did public outreach so that people actually knew and understood what they needed to do. Before then, I was an oversight council for over 20 years in the federal government. As an oversight council, you know what you do is, you do a deep dive. You figure out what's wrong, and you figure out whether there are legislative or administrative solutions to whatever problems you find. You hope you don't find waste, fraud, and abuse, but sometimes you do. You hope what you find are simply inefficiencies, and then you figure out how to fix them. So my experience, as I said, is in figuring out how to fix things. And while I think the planning staff is probably doing a fine job, the public perception does not, does, does not meet up with that. And, and so I think it's important to have someone on the board who understands how to get the public to believe again in the process, how to make sure the doors are open so that people feel like they can participate, like their voices can be heard. That's, that's what I would bring to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Scarié?
Good afternoon. I was, served a full term as the chair of the Montgomery County Planning Board from 2010 to 2014, and during that time, I was able, through some combination of luck and skill, I suppose, to foster an environment of collaboration on the board. We had a very, we really worked together as a board, as a unit, and I think that we were very effective during that four-year period. We did some very big projects, lots of master plans, zoning code rewrite, and of course, millions of square feet of development. It was, it was an honor to serve in that role. And I guess before that, I was a hearing examiner also for the county for nine years, and I conducted hearings on special exceptions and rezonings. I have a great deal of experience with running hearings, holding the, holding the room together and helping people who appear before a body feel like they were listened to. Even if the decision doesn't go their way, it's so, it's so important that people feel like someone actually heard what they had to say and considered their concerns. And I, I think that's a, a big part of the, the role of the chair and the other members on the planning board. I have a wealth of experience in land use in Montgomery County, and I work as a land use lawyer, so all of that, I think, would allow me to step into this role with no, no real learning curve, which I think is what you need just at this moment, for this short period of time where we're in kind of a crisis situation. I guess I should also add, I have very good relationships with senior management in the Parks Department and the planning department, and I'm happy to say I enjoy good relationships with many members of the council as well.
Thank you. Mr. Dreyfus?
I was part of that collaborative board. I served with three different chairs, Royce Hansen, Francois's, and Casey. I think the problem that I, I address, and when I first heard about this, is not the staff, but the board. The relationship of the staff, the respect they have, the, their professionalism integrity was really challenged by board action that was not what the board should be doing. So the, the planning board should be what the staff can rely on to support them and enhance what they do. And that wasn't happening, but it happened under other boards, and I think that's what has to be restored. The staff will respond very positively for the board that respects them. And my career really has been solving problems. I started in the Navy, I got assigned lots of problems that I didn't think I was qualified for, but I managed to get through them. When I was with Carl Freeman Associates, they sent me to Sea Colony to run it in, on Memorial Day, because the manager quit, and I was supposed to only be there for a summer. Year and a half later, I was brought back to Washington to help Mr. Freeman run the company because his main executive team quit. I started the Leisure World Development with Giuseppe Cechi and IDI. I worked with the community to get a consensus for the development. Every site plan, all 15 of them, was supported by the community and the residents. There were no litigation, no opposition to anything we did for almost 30 years. It's phenomenal for condominium associations. So I think I'm qualified, both from experience on the planning board and experience in, on boards, and boards are not the chairman. Boards are all five members. They have to reach a consensus. I'd say, in my experience, 95% of what we did was by consensus. There was very little opposition. And to have a board member who votes four to one all the time is really not constructive. Our job as a minority, if we were a minority, is, is to be persuasive with the other members to get a majority to agree. And I think that's what has to happen at the board. It's not a place for politics. It's a place for hard work and support for the staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Branson, we're going to start with you with this next question, and the question is, how would you help restore confidence in the board and support staff as an interim member?
I think the best way to restore confidence is to make, is to help the staff understand that people are listening. But I unfortunately do not think it's just about staff. It's also about the public. You know, there are plans for lobbying disclosure. I think those plans have to be implemented. There are, there are concerns about open meetings. I think those concerns have to be, the, the plans to open those meetings have to be implemented. You know, as to the staff, the, the staff does have to understand that there is a place for them to go. There are people for them to talk to. You know, it's not my way or the highway. You know, that these are the people who are the experts. They know what the, what, they know the codes and the, and, and all the legal mumbo jumbo that has to be included. They understand this, you know, and, and it is really important to make sure that they are heard, to make sure they are respected, to make sure that they understand the value, the absolute value of their contribution. If they don't understand that, then what you will have is flight, you know, and that kind of brain drain is not good for Montgomery County in any way, shape, or form. So what I would try to do is to make sure that the staff does understand that their views are appreciated, that their perspectives may be from time to time questioned. You know, hard questions are not, are, are not things to be shied away from. You know, sometimes hard questions are how you get to, to different kinds of answers. So, and, and people who are professionals understand that. So that's what I would do.
Thank you. Ms. Scarié?
You know, I think that it will, what will help the staff probably the most is just to feel that the agency is stable and the planning board is stable. I, I think that all the tumultuous events of the last few weeks have, have created some, a real insecurity about the future of the agency, the future of the planning board, the future of people's jobs. So the presence of a new board will do a lot to help sort of lower the temperature on all of those concerns, and I, and I think that having, having some faces on that board that the staff know and, and trust would also be very helpful, to have sort of, you know, known elements, people that the staff know, love the county, love the agency, really have the, the future of the county and the agency, you know, uppermost in their mind in approaching, you know, approaching the task of restarting the planning board. And I guess I would echo what other people have said about the importance of showing staff all the respect that they deserve. You know, I found the last time around that, that really was, that was the most important thing. That was the most basic thing. That's what people want. People want to be treated with respect. That includes the staff, that includes the applicants, that includes the community members who come before the planning board, and I, I know it sounds really basic and simple, but it, it's something that, that has to be done all the time. You know, every single occasion, that has to be a priority. So those, I think, are the factors I would depend on.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Dreyfus, how would you help to restore the confidence in the board and support staff as an interim member?
I've been on a lot of boards, and, both in leadership position and in charge of committees, and boards are not running the organization. The organization is run by the executive director in some cases, or the planning director and the parks director. The board has to understand that those are the people we work with. We hire those people, and those are the only people that report to the board. The rest of the staff reports to them. And they have to feel that the board is not interfering with their operation without dealing with them directly. When we have had meetings as boards at the planning board, we've met with the planning director or the parks director, and at their choosing, they bring to those meetings people that will support whatever position they're taking. I think that's the most important thing as a board, that we realize we're not running the organization. We're managing the key people who are running the organization, and it is not our job to go in and then not, nine years I was on the planning board, I never had an independent meeting with one member other than the planning director, not anybody. And I think that's what they would respect as a board member that we should be doing. They're running the organization, we're unhappy, we deal with them. We don't deal with individuals in the organization. And once they understand they're being respected and listened to, and they're in charge, I think things will settle down.
Thank you. Mr. Barkuma? Absolutely, and you need to press your button. How would you help restore confidence in the board and support staff as an interim member? You have to press the button right by your microphone. There you go.
Thank you all for being so patient and inviting us here. I forgot to thank you for including me in this interview. It seems to me that every time there is a member of a board who's got support staff, it's not a separation of duties, it's in fact one team trying to get to the result that's expected. The result that's expected, in my mind, from the planning board, is to make independent decisions based on facts presented, backed up by the research and information that's been gathered by the staff. When I was eight years old, my uncle, who was a district judge, said something that has stuck with me all the way, and that is, not only must justice be done, it must also be seen to be done. So I would say that restoring confidence in the board and in the staff, in the planning board and the staff, requires example from every one of the planning board members of impartial, fact-based judgment, and recognition that staff is the most critical part of that decision-making process, and respect them for what they produce. It's not a split screen, upstairs, downstairs thing like in the old British system that I grew up in. So the idea that not only do we do it as a team, we must also be seen to be doing it. So I would strongly recommend that, besides having these hearings on television and planning board, if we can get a regular column or a regular time slot in the local TV channels that, that explains what the project was that was being presented and what decisions were taken, I think that would make for restoring confidence, because transparency is really the most important, critical part of a democratic process, and everything that you and us, we will do together, is based on bolstering that transparency, where every individual of the county has an equal right to say and get and expect proper service.
Thank you for that response. Ms. Scarié will begin with you for this next question, and the question is, what do you believe are the most critical issues the board needs to address, other than restoring confidence in the next few months?
I think that this interim board would best serve the process by not trying to make any big changes or big policy decisions. I don't expect this interim board to take on any master plans, the time is too short. There may be, it may be appropriate to look into some of the actions of the prior, prior board, not the board members, interactions between board and staff, see if there are any discussions that need to be had to, to clear the air. There is, I understand, a, you know, a process that's being done to investigate classed claims, and I don't think the planning board has anything to do with that process. Budget is coming up, so this board will be deciding on the budget to propose to the council, and that's an important function. I understand, you know, from stuff I've seen on agendas, that they've been working on the budget and the normal course of events, I suspect that this board will, that'll be one of the first things this board has to take up. If there are, if there is a need for any kind of structural change, I suppose this board could make recommendations to the next board. I would personally, if I were on this board, I would be reluctant to, as I said, to make any big changes, because I, I feel like this is just, this board is serving for such a short time period that, that seems like more than its role. But there may be recommendations that this board could make to the next board or to the council. That would be helpful.
Thank you. Mr. Dreyfus, same question. What are the most critical issues you believe the board needs to address, other than restoring confidence in the next few months?
I'm here because it's interim. I have absolutely no interest of continuing after the interim period, and what I believe that means is to not introduce anything new, but let the staff and the board continue with the business that it, that it has to do. It has to deal with the budget, there are regulatory things coming up, there are site plans, and everything that happens on a Thursday has been left, you know, off the table for the last three weeks. Three months, we can catch up, make sure we do no harm, and tee up the, the process, in my view, for the next board that's going to be long-term. You will have time to interview and go through all that process. I have a quick story, and it's about why I was, we had some friends at our house in Fredericksburg, at a lake, and we, after the young people spent their weekend, they wanted to take us out to breakfast. So we, they said, "Let's go to the Waffle House." So we went to the Waffle House in Fredericksburg, there's a line out the door. So I went in to see how long it was going to take, and I, as I walked in the door, I saw all the tables were empty, most of them, but they weren't bussed. The girl behind the register was sitting there, not doing anything, the cook was not cooking, and the guy doing dishes wasn't doing anything. So I said, "Well, can I talk to your manager?" And they said, "He's out sick today." So I said, "Well, can I help?" And they said, "Please." So I asked the girl at the register to go outside and give people menus and give us their orders so that the cook had something to do. I asked the cook and the dishwasher and the guy to bus the tables so people could go in and sit down. And by the time I was done, the place was operating and the line was gone. And I see that as the job here. This is what this is. My wife is reading the paper in Colorado, and she turns to me and says, "Waffle House." So that's how I see the problem, and I think just getting the job done, getting everybody the support they need is, is going to go a long way, and not doing anything new.
Thank you. I appreciate that a lot. Mr. Raj Barkuma, same question. What are the most critical issues, what are the most critical issues you believe the board needs to address, other than restoring confidence in the next few months? Need to press your button again, the one right by the, you need to press your, sorry about that, your button. There you go. Perfect.
Oh, stand, sorry. The most important things to be doing is to re-understand, especially when you have a brand-new board, I think you've got a new room to sweep. That means that we need to know what we are sweeping and what we are going to save, which means going back to the core purpose of the planning board. Sometimes when you've been doing something for a while, we tend to stray from the main purpose, and if we manage to get back to doing what we are supposed to do, do it to the regulations that are in force, and keep meticulous records of everything that takes place, you don't have to make a new invention of what has to be done. It's just simply a matter of... It's just simply a matter of getting it done the proper way. Nothing under the table, nothing in the cash box, just straightforward dealing and very upright behavior.
Thank you. Ms. Branson?
Yeah, I think that people have pretty much said what needs to happen. I mean, the first thing that needs to happen is the budget. I mean, that that becomes a real important thing. But after that, normalize, stabilize, play catch-up, and set the table for the next group of people. I mean, those are the things that really have to be done in the next, you know, three or four months or however long. And and if this interim, if an interim board is able to do those things, then I think they will have gone a long way toward establishing a sense of accountability, a sense of calm, and a sense that, you know, we we have, we have come back to even keel. We we have come back to being the kind of government Montgomery County expects.
Thank you. Mr. Dreyfus, this next question is for you. It's a little long, so bear with me. And if you need me to repeat it, I'm happy to do that. All right, yes. So the question is, what role should the planning board take in addressing racial equity and social justice issues? So that's the first part of the question. And then, how can lessons learned during the council's review of the racial equity and social justice components of Thrive, such as culturally and linguistically proficient outreach and engagement, be incorporated in future planning endeavors?
I have to tell you honestly, I was not involved in Thrive. It happened after my tenure, and I don't know much about it. I do know that the council passed it, and so our job will be to implement it. And I'm going to rely on the staff that wrote it to help make sure it's followed. I really don't know much about the aspects you've raised. Sorry.
No worries. Yeah, I appreciate the response and your candor. Mr. Barkuma, same question. What role should the planning board take in addressing racial equity and social justice issues? How can lessons learned during the council's review of the racial equity and social justice components of Thrive, such as culturally and linguistically proficient outreach and engagement, be incorporated in future planning endeavors? Need you to hit your button again. There you go.
Social justice is built into the system, and what we have to do is to make sure that we are being fair by everyone, that there is full access, full availability of all services. And I'm generalizing this because the question came at me. I don't want to talk to a specific issue, but I would imagine that if someone was homeless and sleeping on the streets, we would do something to help them. That would be one aspect of it. And that's a planning board action, I suspect. Affordable housing definitely falls under that. The aspiration is that we would have a vibrant, livable society which has, provides the most amount of support to enrich the quality of life. And that would be, at the social justice level, approach as it, get the basic shelter provided, provide, find ways of doing that. And there are many ways in which it can be done. We can't do anything to increase their income, but we can certainly give them job training. And so I would think that social justice pans out from the planning board to affect other departments within the system.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Ms. Branson?
So as I understand it, many of the complaints about social justice and equity in in Thrive 2050 have to do with concerns about outreach, concerns about inclusion, and concerns about of the residents of being gentrified and displaced. You know, those are very real concerns for people. The the solution, if you will, will not come overnight. I mean, I think it is really important to read and understand the racial impact statements that the office does, that that the council office, you know, does, and and to really try to implement those. As far as, you know, on a short-term basis, I think what can happen is that, you know, people need to feel included. They need to understand that their views have been heard. I, you know, have been a part of a few of those outreach sessions and frankly, did not feel as though people in the community had the full benefit of of being heard. On one hand, I can understand the pandemic probably limited a lot of of the planning board's ability to get out and talk to people. Sometimes what people will say on a Zoom call is very different than what they will say, you know, when when they're out at a community building, you know, surrounded by their neighbors, and they understand that they're they're in a place where people understand them. But but as we come out of the pandemic, I think it would behoove us to understand how to get back out into the community, how to reach out to people in a way that they understand, meet people where they are. You know, that's, that's always the big deal with outreach, meeting people where they are, listening to what they say, taking that back to the office and figuring out how you improve upon what folks have told you is their concern. You know, and then you go out and you do it again. You know, and you keep doing it until until you feel like you have something that makes sense and will actually help to shift the balance. Let's be for real, this county is majority-minority. We cannot, we cannot continue to pretend like we're not. You know, this is who we are. Welcome to Moco. We are a different kind of place, and if we don't bake equity in the cake, we will not be happy in 10 years. Things will quickly fall apart. The time is now to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kerrie?
You know, when I was with the planning board before, there was a lot of effort already starting at that time to try and figure out how to improve outreach, how to improve participation, how to reach the portions of the county's population who historically had not been involved very much in the land use and planning process. And I I know that the staff made and the planning board made tremendous efforts in that regard with regard to Thrive, as well as plans that preceded it. You know, clearly, there was room for improvement. You know, there's, the council made additions to the document, you know, in that direction. And I I hope that, I think that that's an opportunity for the planning board and the staff to take a fresh look at it. You know, the Park and Planning has been a leader in professional planning circles for decades, an organization that is looked up to and considered a model. And there is every reason for this, that organization to be a model in this field as well. You know, we have a tremendous opportunity because of the diversity of our county. This, you know, this is the place where this should happen. If it can be done effectively, it can be done effectively in Montgomery County. So I think it's a challenge that the planning board and the staff can rise to. And and I know that there's goodwill to try and do that. So that would be my hope.
Thank you. The next question, I just want to make clear for some context here. I am asking the same question of all 11 candidates, and this is again in the spirit of full transparency. It's a fairly straightforward question, but just so that our public understands, all the information the council has as we deliberate. And that question is, would you be interested in serving as chair? It's just a simple question. So, Mr.?
Yes, I would, and I welcome the opportunity to bring the leadership skills I've learned over in very large organizations and small ones. And the leadership style would very simply be inspire everyone to do their best.
Thank you. Ms. Branson?
Probably not.
No problem.
If 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 it was necessary, I would, but I, it's not my first, not my first pick.
No problem. And there's no right or wrong answer here.
Okay, good.
I want to make that clear. Ms. Kerrie?
Yes, I would be prepared to serve as chair.
Thank you. Mr. Dreyfus?
Would also, but if it's available as a member, that's fine, too.
Gotcha. Thank you. And then the final question is, are there any potential conflicts of interest which we should be aware? And I should make clear, last question for me. My colleagues will have an opportunity to ask a question as well. So we will start with Mr. Barkuma again. Thanks, Raj.
What's the question again?
Sorry. The question is, are there any potential conflicts of interest of which we should be aware?
That's a very good question. I really have no guidelines to tell you about, but I would do inspiration, prayer, and dedication. That would be my three-part approach to it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Again, are there any potential conflicts of interest of which we should be aware? Ms. Branson?
No.
Thank you. Ms. Kerrie?
Well, yes. I, you know, I am a practicing lawyer with a practice that includes appearing before this body and the planning board. And, you know, I thought about that long and hard before putting my name in because it's it's a very, it's a very serious issue that really requires a lot of care. And I I think that I can serve in the interim position without having any actual conflicts of interest by taking some, some very clear steps. Obviously, I would recuse myself from anything coming before the planning board that involves my law firm. I have a colleague who will, if I am appointed, who will be taking over the matters that I have that are active and that would be coming to the planning board at some, you know, at some point in their lifetime. You know, we took a look at our caseload to see how many of those items are likely to come up in the space of the three months that I sort of projected as the time period. And it looks like there might be three to five items between, you know, with the firm's whole land use practice. There's only two of us, so it's not, you know, this would be much more difficult if I run a firm with eight land use lawyers. So there are a couple of items that are very minor, not substantive. There are two substantive matters that I think are likely to come before the planning board during the interim, the life of the interim chair, and I would leave the room for those matters. I also intend to be very, very careful, if I am appointed, not to be involved in any conversations with staff or planning board members about things that they may not know I have a client with an interest in. So I, you know, I plan to be very alert to that. If there are, just to make sure that, I don't want to, I don't want to receive any information that I would not be privy to as a as a member of the private bar if it relates to something a client of mine is going to come back with once I'm back in the private sector. And I would not want to unintentionally impart information to the staff or the other planning board members that that is, that it, that would not come to them in the normal course of events. So there is a possibility, and I I would be very much dedicated to avoiding the appearance or the reality of any conflict of interest.
I appreciate that comprehensive response and your transparency. Thank you. Mr. Dreyfus?
Simple answer is no. I am an executive vice president and board member of IDI Group Companies Headquarters in Arlington. All of our development is in Virginia. There is no property or potential of anything in Montgomery County. And I am a limited partner in an investment property that has also no plans or opportunity to do anything in front of the planning board. So, no.
Thank you. Colleagues, I, just in some quick conversations here, those were very elaborate and comprehensive responses that were very impressive. And, oh, Ms. Branson? You, you did answer. Yes, yes.
It was short.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. And we do have two more panels to get through today and then a deliberation that we have to have after. So I really want to thank all of you. I know I speak on behalf of all of my colleagues and expressing our deepest appreciation for your willingness to serve, and we will be following up.
Mr. Dreyfus, would you consider opening a restaurant in Montgomery County?
A Waffle House. Yes.
It'd be a Waffle.
That's right. I think they let me do that because they thought I was in the restaurant business, but I wasn't.
Levity today is good, believe me. All right, let's move on to our second panel. Thank you again. I'd like to invite forward Ms. Barbara Goldberg-Goldman, Mr. David Hill, Mr. William Kirwin, and Mr. Vincent Napoleon. Thank you all again, all 11 of you, as well as everyone who has applied, has extraordinary resumes, and we appreciate your interest. And I will be asking the same six questions of all of you. And once again, we'll do this in alphabetical order and then work our way through. So Ms. Barbara Goldberg-Goldman, you will be first up. And the first question is, what skills and experience do you have that is relevant to the work of the planning board?
So I I'd like to break it into two pieces because the first set of skills, I think, go along on a much broader context as dealing with before any board. I'm a good listener. I talk when I have something to say. I say ditto a lot when I need to. I feel that I am, and I have demonstrated, an enormous amount of respect for staff and for people coming before a board. I have a very sincere interest in understanding the needs and and desires of people that do come before the board. I like to take broad brush strokes when necessary, as well as small scalpel-like looks at, look at things. As far as the planning board is concerned, in this interim period, I I have skills that are are tried and true when it comes to damage control, when it comes to dealing with upheaval internally in an organization, as well as externally in dealing with the public. I have a good appreciation for the image of an organization, as well as the internal operations of an organization. I think I am very well-suited for this position, certainly on an interim level. And I want to say that I am most honored to be selected as one of the finalists, certainly amidst some people who I consider to be leaders in the county, who have incredible experience. And I I know some of them. I have worked with some of them at the planning board, and I have worked with some of them outside of the planning board. But I think I am equipped and skilled and certainly ready and willing and able to do the job that is required in this interim period.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hill, you are next. What skills and experience do you have that is relevant to the work of the planning board?
I come at this from municipal experience. I was a land use commissioner for the city of Rockville for 20 years. I served 10 years on the Board of Appeals and 10 years on the Planning Commission, was senior commissioner for five years. I'll also mention that I sat on the committee that rewrote the city zoning ordinance about 10 years ago, and also was the senior commissioner for most of the city master plan cycle for 2040 that just culminated. And I co-chaired the charter review commission. So I have a lot of experience dealing with parliamentary activity and committee activity, how to balance staff with public submission, with... how to balance staff with public submission, with advocate counsel, and I won't elaborate further on that. I believe I can do this as an interim position from that experience, and it's, I can hit the ground running.
Thank you. Mr. Kerwin.
For me, I think it starts with being a lifelong resident in Montgomery County and growing up in the Long Branch downtown Silver Spring neighborhood, where at that time, in the late 60s and 70s, it was uniquely a diverse place to live. And it was, it was sort of the precursor for what the county is today more broadly. And that gave me experience and made me, I think, colorblind is the inappropriate term to use these days. I think it's more color acuity that I feel I have, where I can see the vibrance of diversity in our community and where we must, we must respect that. I think my 34 years of professional experience, as well as being backed by my degree, my professional degree, in a land use profession as an architect, where I've guided my clients through the important process of helping them envision their future, and I think that's the role the planning board plays in helping the county envision its future. And my 10 years of service on the Historic Preservation Commission, five years as its chair, gave me the experience and the procedures and the decorum that I think is expected of a planning board member. And lastly, I think it's the, my credentials as the U.S. Green Building Council Lead Accredited Professional, which I think the board has been lacking for many years, gives, you know, will help me to bring environmental stewardship objectives to our deliberations.
Thank you. Mr. Napoleon, same question.
Mr. President, thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to be here today to speak with you about this very important position. As I respond to your question, I'd like to at least give you a little understanding of who I am, because I think that's important, not only for you, the council, but also for the public. I am a long-term resident of Montgomery County. I raised my family here in the county, and my son attended independent schools here. I'm civic-minded, serving as a board member of several community organizations, including the executive board of the National Capital Area Council, the Boy Scouts. I'm also an attorney who has been practicing for more than 30 years, having served as General Counsel of two public companies and divisions of significant Fortune 100 companies. Have also served as Chair of the Corporate Group of the Office of the City Solicitor in Philadelphia, where I presided over significant real estate transactions and significant infrastructure projects. In addition, I served with the United States Air Force for 30 years, where I was at the rank of Colonel. I think what's also interesting about my background and my experience and what I bring to the table is having been exposed to multiple sectors, the aerospace and maritime sector, biotechnology, consumer goods, the government, both local and federal, healthcare, heavy industries, professional services, and technology and advanced technology, all of which are very essential to the future economic interests of this county, and certainly to the way in which land and land use is actually exercised here in this county. I've also had, as I mentioned, served as a senior legal executive in a municipal setting. While in Philadelphia and Chair of the Corporate Group, I led, as part of that, the real estate group, which we were involved in significant infrastructure projects, including the construction of the Philadelphia Convention Center, as well as having performed on and supported P3 projects with respect to the Philadelphia International Airport, where we actually built the international terminal, as well as the commuter terminals coming out of Philadelphia. In addition, I would say that, given those set of experiences, I've been involved, and I do understand the cross-branch, meaning legislature and executive, dynamic. Having routinely interacted with mayor, the mayor, members of the city council, and other public officials, I think that helps me during this interim period in being able to add to the stability of the board and certainly add to the interaction that I believe the board ought to have with council and with the public. I would also say that there have been a number of other experiences in terms of my municipal experience. But I think as a result of all those experiences, what I bring to the table is stability, thoughtfulness, and creating a compliant and ethical environment, which I think is important. But more importantly, I think independence is very important in coming to, into this role. I think new to the planning board, I believe I will bring the kind of independence and thought that would result in fresh eyes on issues and certainly results in inability to expedite and certainly engage in the planning board activities in a way that would implement in a very fair and equitable way. In addition to independence, I think I will bring to the planning board an ability to be even-handed, apply even-handed considerations of concerns of all interested parties, an understanding of the importance of land use decisions on our county and its future, and a willingness to listen to all sides, the capability to ensure a fair and transparent process in considering the viewpoints of residents, developers, or others, and a strong desire to advance the public good, which I think is important. Thank you.
Thank you for that response. The next question, we will start with Mr. Hill, is, how would you help restore confidence in the board and support staff as an interim member?
In responding, I just want to turn that on its head quickly because I think I can take supporting staff quickly here, which is, you know, staff are professionals, we expect them to be professionals. As board members, we need to communicate our expectations and have reasonable expectations of them. And I think an important thing for staff, who is often vilified when it comes to public processes, is to make sure that we're defending staff reasonably. Yeah, sometimes staff does do things that are worth noting, but we certainly shouldn't be persecuting them in public session. Regarding public confidence, which is a much bigger matter and a harder one to get our hands around, I think that doing a good job is a basic point for the interim period, doing a quality job without flash and making sure that the public good is serviced in the process. An awful lot of land use planning comes down to whose ox gets gored, like the metaphor. And one of the things I've always focused on as a commissioner is making sure that if your ox is the dead one on the field, that you understand why, and you understand the public particularly can get lost in our sort of arcane processes. So, explaining things to the public, I think, is critically important in establishing public confidence. I also make sure that unspoken understandings that concur in all the gyrations of planning get, are handled transparently and explained as well as they can be. And here is an example. Mr. Chairman, you mentioned that there's a lot of conspiracy theory flowing around, around the public out there, and I'll take this opportunity to testify publicly that no one prompted me to stand for the service, and I have spoken to very few people about any detail of this service, and the only communication I've had with your body is through your administrative staff regarding applications, what we had to do, and the details of being here today. And I think that's a common experience for everyone that's speaking to you. So, there is no conspiracy. I don't perceive that this body is pushing through something. What you are doing is trying to sustain the public services, critical public services of the county government in good order for interim.
Thanks, I appreciate that. That was well said. So, same question, Mr. Kerwin. How would you help restore confidence in the board and support staff as an interim member?
Well, I think you all have already taken that first step. I mean, there's, I'm sitting up here today with 10 very impressive candidates for this position, and I've already heard from, from former colleagues in the Planning Department, Parks Department, and general public, who are very relieved of the bliss that you guys have put together. So, I think that's, that's the important first step. I think once you make those selections, the five who are selected really need to roll their sleeves and get the work done. There's, we've already lost several weeks of development proposals that need to move forward. We need to restore that confidence in addition to the staff and the public, to the development community, so that we keep those projects here in Montgomery County and those who are planning projects, keep those in Montgomery County. But it's also the professionalism that I think has to come with this position. I think putting together this list of appropriately trained and experienced professionals is going to, you know, instill that confidence, and that's what I'm hearing out there in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Goldberg-Goldman.
So, before I start, I just want to say to my colleague over here, go Phillies. As you know, I have been Chair of the Affordable Housing Conference of Montgomery County for 33 years. I have also been Chair of the Housing Opportunities Commission. I was on the commission for 13 years, maybe 13 plus, but I chaired for an unprecedented term for five years. In that five-year period, we encountered enormous upheaval and turmoil. There are some parallels to what was going on here with the council and the planning board, but then there were some very vastly different situations and circumstances. The engine that makes any organization run is the staff. And I think at the planning board, we have incredible people. We have well-educated experts in their fields. They need to be reassured that their jobs are safe. They need to be reassured that they are valuable and valued by the staff, and they need to understand that they are depended upon by the board. If we need an ombudsman, maybe institute something like that. If we need to be able to have monthly, or in this case, I would assume, weekly or bi-weekly meetings with staff, there are 140 planning staff members and 800 parks, and the chairman certainly knows that better than, or the president, excuse me, knows that better than anyone, 800 employees. It's almost 1,000 people that are looking in saying, what is going on? What does my job look like? Who's listening to me? I don't know what to do. And they, they need to be reassured that they're okay and they're safe and that they're protected. That goes along with an image, the image of the agency. I often quote Aristotle, but I think I'm misusing the quote, which is, the whole is much greater than, than the parts. In this case, the council and the agency are greater than the small parts, and so the image is very important. Staff needs to also recognize that the image of the organization or the agency is most important in the public. There are reasons why Park and Planning has received awards over decades. There are reasons that Park and Planning has been lauded way beyond Montgomery County's borders and throughout the country. And much of that reason is because of the staff, but the stories need to be told, there needs to be business as usual. There is too much on, on the plates of the staff, as well as the board members. The budget certainly is critically important. I know I've had probably too much experience looking at budgets. I'm used to it, but that's important. And we need to make sure that there is, I don't mean to use a Hebrew word, but I'm going to, and some people may understand it. It's called shalom baid. It means peace in the house. We need to establish peace in the house. There needs to be a calm, and there needs to be an image from the outside looking in that we are business as usual, we are together, the board members must work as a team, we must be all on the same page, nobody goes rogue, there is one point person to talk to, the press that likes to generate stories, that likes to dig up accusations and falsities that they know really nothing about. They shouldn't know. We don't need to know everything. But I think that I am well-equipped to be able to deal with that upheaval.
Thank you so much. Mr. Napoleon.
Mr. President, I will quote John Dunn. Mr. President, I will quote John Dunn. No man is an island. Every man is a part of the main, meaning that the board can't do without the staff, and the staff cannot do without the board. The board is very critical, I'm sorry, the staff is very critical to the success of the board. And it's critical in driving solutions, I believe. And so, I think as we begin to look at the intricate understanding of the question that you posited, I think it's important to understand that running through that, that theme is a notion of trust and leadership. And so, if indeed the, the staff can understand that they can rely on the board and that there's leadership that will allow for that interaction, and that they can trust the board as much as the board can trust the staff, I believe there is real opportunity here for success going forward in the interaction between both the staff and the board.
Thank you for those responses. We move on to the next question, Mr. Kerwin. We'll start with you. What are the most critical issues that you, you believe the board needs to address, other than restoring confidence in the next few months?
Well, I think getting the workflow going again, I think that's the most important thing, the interim board, the role they'll play in the next several months. And, you know, it's, it's, it's also about, you know, as I mentioned before, it's about, you know, restoring confidence in the developing community, too. I mean, I think that's, that's, that's going to be critical. But it's, it's really about rolling the sleeves up and getting the work done. I mean, I think that's, that's why I stepped up to the plate, to try to help out, offer my services to help out, and that's, that's the most important step.
Thank you. Mr. Napoleon.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I think as we look forward here, I think it's important initially for the board to be involved in creating a stable environment. And it's from that stable environment that we can sort of lift off and provide a trajectory for being able to work on those issues, the pipeline issues that exist within the board as we speak today, those that have not been addressed because of the issues with which we're, we're currently dealing. I think it's also important, too, that an enhanced interaction between the board and the staff, as I mentioned earlier, becomes very important in being able to address those pipeline issues and certainly in creating that very stable environment. But more importantly than anything, there has to be a relationship, a very good working relationship between the board and the council. And it's that interaction that I think will drive everything, sort of top-down, as well as bottom-up, in my view. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Goldberg-Goldman.
Thank you. I'd like to say ditto. I think that it is critically important that the relationship between the board and staff are kept professional, and, and there is an exchange of respect for the board's role, as well as for the staff's role. So, in terms of where we go from this point moving forward, we must be cognizant of what the jobs are that must be done, and business as usual must move ahead. And so, once there is an understanding of top-down and bottom-up, and what is on the plate, whether it be budget or a zoning, zoning issue, a setback issue, anything, it has to be something that everybody feels they are being heard, they are listened to, and they are respected. That is among the staff, that is among the board, and that is also among the people coming before the board. They need to feel that sense of trust and confidence that it's not really broken, it's just different, it's changed, and we have to evolve with that change. And so, I believe from the bottom of my heart that this can be done. It won't be easy, because there are always people in the background that need to create trouble, they need to stir something up, they need to have the drama. We have to prevent that. We have to work as a team, a team not just among the board members, but a team with the staff and the board, working together, responding to the council.
Thank you. Mr. Hill.
I think the most critical issue facing this interim service is carrying it on and continuing to conduct public business. It, I think, as interim members, we should very circumspect about what we commit the permanent board to, because we're there for only a very short period of time. And it's really a matter of keeping the operations going. When I hear you say critical issues, I'm thinking of substantive issues as well, and in the interest of brevity, I will just say, one of the critical issues I'm worried about the county is whether smart growth is faltering. And I'll leave it to you all to follow up, question if that you'd like to hear more, but that's, that's a critical issue to me. A question of that you'd like to hear more, but that's, that's a critical issue to me.
Thank you. All right, so that takes us to the fourth question, and Mr. Napoleon, we'll start with you. And again, it's a little long, so bear with me. But what, what role should the planning board take in addressing racial equity and social justice issues? How can lessons learned during the council's review of the racial equity and social justice components of Thrive, such as culturally and linguistically proficient outreach and engagement, be incorporated in future planning endeavors?
Mr. President, as you know, this county has been laden with significant racial justice equity issues through a number of years. And that's inherent in some of the early general plans that have actually been promulgated by both the board and the council. I, I, I'm very happy to see and, and, and hear that, as a result of the passing of the Thrive 2050 resolution this morning, that we now can begin the process of addressing some of those racial injustice equity issues. Things like redlining, for example, are the kinds of things that have no place in this county and certainly in Thrive 2050 going forward. What I see now is an opportunity for the board, in conjunction with the council, to begin a process of implementing the tenets of Thrive 2050. And there are a number of things that will be done during the course of, of the years going forward in which that will happen. And it will happen as a result of applications being filed with the board, plans being filed, land use applications being filed. And we'll be able to, as, as a board, either through this interim board as well as in the permanent board, to make a difference in ensuring that the racial justice equity issues are protected and are preserved through that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Goldberg-Goldman?
Well, as, as Chair of the Affordable Housing Conference of Montgomery County, and as coming before the, the planning board on multiple occasions, working with them in agreement, working with them in disagreement, I know that many of you know that Thrive is near and dear to me. So I want to congratulate the board for that passage. Have we come a long way? Yes, we certainly have. From wedges and corridors in the 60s to a rewrite in the 90s, and all the while, our, our demography has been changing dramatically. As one of the other candidates mentioned, we are a minority-majority county. And I like to think of us as, in broad strokes, that these needs of the variety, the rich cultural, ethnic, religious diversity in this county, those needs are being met, but they're not yet. I believe that Thrive, which is not a codified in stone law, it is a guide for us. It's an affirmation of what needs to be done, what needs to be looked at over the course of the next 30 years. I like to look at it through an equity lens. And by equity lens, I mean that we put on glasses and put in our brains the idea of we are one Montgomery, and we have variety of needs for a very diverse population. I'd like to be able to take an overlay and look at where certain things were done over the course of the last, of the last half a century, quite frankly. Where are the parks? Are they accessible to everybody? Is everybody able to have the ballfields for their children that they can play on and feel that this, too, is their home? So while we have made great strides, 100%, absolutely, we have a lot of strides yet to make. And those strides are dictated by, yes, mistakes that were made in the past, but what the needs are today. We need to look at racial, ethnic, gender, religious equality and equity, and we need to address them, and we need to do it now. This is, yes, we have Thrive over a 30-year period, but now is the time that we can take action. And the people sitting up there, where you are, have an obligation to do it, and the people sitting on the planning board have an obligation to do it. This is not a situation, with all due respect, not to, I don't want to, to make anybody feel uncomfortable, but this is not in the 60s where a bunch of white men were dictating what everybody's needs were. That's not what we are, that's not who we are. And that's why Montgomery County has been called an enlightened community by Utny Magazine. It said that Montgomery County is the most enlightened community in the country and the best place in which to live. We need to make that come true. We need to follow up on where the voices are and make up for that right now. It's not, oh, we have a nice plan, let's put it on the shelf. No, no. We need to put on the equity lenses, we need to see where it is, where we are lacking, and we need to deal with it, and not say, "Yeah, incrementally we can," because that's what's been done, let's face it. They have been incremental improvements. We don't have time for that any longer, because our population should demand not to do it any longer. That's where I am.
Thank you. Mr. Hill?
Yes, I assure you, I'm certainly conversant with equity issues, but pragmatically speaking, you are talking to candidates who will serve for three or four months. And building on a prior answer, I think it's important that we don't overly commit, in that very temporary period of time, the county government to actions that need more consideration. It strikes me that land use is generally a balance between private property rights and the public good, and it's usually driven by legality, ordinance process, and master planning. And certainly equity issues fall in the realm of public good, and when we can insert those and consider those, we very much should. But those really only come into play in process, and the extent that ordinance and master planning includes them. And I believe a Thrive effort does include that, and that's a good aspirational step forward. It's going to take time to implement it. And I will just say, that crest behind you for the county, if I translate correctly, is, the motto is, "You guard well." And I will strive to do that in the limited time if I serve.
Thank you. Mr. Kirwin?
Well, I think the general plan that you passed today gives us a lot of tools to address these issues. Most notably, I think, is housing and transportation equity. And if, given the opportunity, the, the interim board should do whatever they can to promote those issues. But, you know, in the short term that they'll serve, that'll probably be something that will be passed on to the, to the next planning board. And, you know, in regards to some of the public concerns regarding outreach, I think it will be the role of this, this interim board to do whatever they can to, to promote that awareness and, and training for the planning department staff to make sure we address those concerns going forward.
Thank you. All right, as I said to the last panel, this question I'm asking of all candidates, just for full transparency, are you interested in serving as Chair? So, Mr. Kirwin, we'll just start with you.
I apply it only for a membership position on the board.
No.
No.
Okay.
Yes, I believe I could serve as Chair, given my leadership experience.
Great. And the final question is, are there any potential conflicts of interest of which we should be aware? Why don't we just go down the list again? Mr. Kirwin?
The only conflict of interest with regard to my serving as a interim planning board member is our office occasionally does work for Montgomery County Public Schools, and sometimes those projects have to come before the planning board for mandatory referral. And in those instances, I would recuse myself from those deliberations.
Thank you. Mr. Hill?
Essentially, no, but in the interest of being exhaustive, I will disclose that I work for a large business in the county that primarily does social science research, that are very presence and, and size in the county. If I am encountering problems with that, recusal is the obvious solution. And I will mention very vaguely that I'm a director for a nonprofit that primary location is in a state park in Prince George's County. And very vaguely, as part of service on the Park and, the National Park and Planning Commission, that might also have something, something of an umbrella, and if so, recusal is the appropriate answer, but in the short period of time, I don't expect that to be a problem.
Thank you.
So, so I am the Chair and founder of, co-chair and founder of the Affordable Housing Conference of Montgomery County. We often weigh in on certain agenda items that are brought before the Park and Planning Board, as well as the council. I would be willing to recuse myself if need be in those instances. I do know that there was a situation where we had a co-chair of the Affordable Housing Conference serve on park and planning. I didn't see any conflicts there. But I am a firm believer that there should be no perception that there is any conflict of interest, any way, shape, or form. And so if need be, I would certainly be willing begrudgingly to step down from the Affordable Housing Conference after 33 years. But certainly on an interim basis, I, I would do that.
Thank you. Mr. Napoleon?
No.
Great. All right, thank you all very much. You acquitted yourselves well. We appreciated the responses. And we will now move on to the third and final panel. I'd like to invite forward Mr. Roberto Pinheiro, Ms. Amy Pressley, and Mr. Jeff Seitz. Stretch? All right. Thank you all again so much for joining us. Six questions. We'll do this in alphabetical order, and, Mr. Pinheiro, we're going to start with you. The first question is, what skills and experience do you have that is relevant to the work of the planning board? And let me just state upfront, as I did with the other two panels, thank you very much for your interest and your dedication and your public service and your willingness to serve. Mr. Pinheiro?
Sure. Good afternoon. Being in the last panel is kind of, we're all tired, so I'm going to make my answers very brief. Thank you for inviting me. I really appreciate, I, I know I've been in this type of situation before, with you guys two years ago. But I feel that, you know, I have the academic, the skills, the experience to serve on the board. I have, I'm a planner, I'm also a houser. I've always been interested in housing. In terms of my academic background, I have a master's degree in planning from Harvard and PhD studies from UC Berkeley. I, my experience, I worked for GAO for 25 years as a housing and community development specialist. Now, that experience is good in the, in the sense that, as you know, GAO is an agency that does oversight and accountability, and I think that's what's needed right now at the planning board. I also have served on the HOC, as you know, for 12 years. Part of that time, I served as the Chair. And we, we had a, a very good board. We never had the drama that the planning board had. We got along, we basically did a lot of work by consensus, the board, and we respected the staff. And I think I would bring that same kind of experience if, if you guys selected me for the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Pressley?
Again, thank you for having us. Thank you for considering me once again. So my answer starts with eight years of service on the planning board, from 2008 to 2016. And I think what's interesting is I started on one side of the dais, which was civic activist to the extreme. And then, serving in the planning board position, I learned quite a bit over eight years. It was an honor to serve with very amenable boards. I mean, I've been under Royce Hansen, and then Francois Scarry, and Casey Anderson, and gleaned a lot of information, and went from being very extreme on one side to being able to be balanced enough, as I mentioned in my cover letter, to anger each side equally during that term. In addition to knowing how to go through the things, I understand the operations of the planning board, I had a great admiration for the staff, and I believe they did for me as well. I think one of the most significant things I could provide, especially in an interim position, is just being able to keep the ball rolling. A lot of people coming before, you know, in the interview, have said, "Keep things going as they happen." Keeping things moving, yes, but there's going to be room for some improvement. So some of the other things I can bring to that is that I've had roles as operations manager for certain places. I've run two companies, myself, I own my own company right now. And I understand the importance of the transparency factor, rebuilding the confidence. I think I have the capability to do that. But most importantly, I think the experience I've had will translate immediately into an operable service.
Thank you. Mr. Seitz?
I'll try to be short. I've been short all my life. This is a familiar situation for me. Being on this side of the table is a little bit odd, but I, I thank you for the honor of being a finalist in this. I think my entire 37 career, year career has prepared me to be on the board. Thirty-seven years of that were with the planning commission itself. I started as a summer intern under Royce Hansen. Royce Hansen taught me when he was a professor at AU, just to tell you how old I've been. Probably the best thing I ever did was, was get Norman Dreyfus to be on the Aspen Hill Citizen Advisory Board. So you can see, I've been around a little bit. I started out as, as a demographer. I went on and, and did comprehensive master plans. I was then in charge of the specialist at Park and Planning. Transportation, historic preservation, natural resources, park planning. And in that, of course, I was a supervisor for Gwen Wright, before she went on to Arlington and became planning director. After that, of course, I went to the council and helped them with the zoning ordinance, and did that for 14, almost 15 years. I've, I've been, most recently, a volunteer for the council. I helped with redistricting and reviewed the Parks Department budget. So I know the planning department from a very different perspective than about everybody I've heard today. I know it from the staff position, looking up at the planning board. And then, from the council, I know it somewhat looking down at the planning board. And the perspectives I have not had is, is being an applicant or a participant before the board. But I certainly have learned how to deal with public hearings. I think you've seen that I have the temperament to deal with contentious hearings and to listen and provide an adequate response to, to people coming before. In terms of law, I've taught land use planning and, and subdivision law at University of Maryland. I'm still teaching, teaching as a guest lecturer. I, I still am a guest lecturer at George Washington School of Law. So I think I have some experience to put me in good stead for being on, on the board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Seitz. Ms. Pressley, we'll start with you with this next question. How would you help restore confidence in the board and support staff as an interim member?
First and foremost, the staff has to know that they have a safe environment to express any concerns or any ideas they have. When I was on the board before, it was clear that staff were comfortable in their role. Each, each group has their own discipline, and they weren't afraid to present, even though sometimes a board would disagree or ask questions. The sense I have now is that people may be pressured to not do what they would otherwise do without feeling pressured. Meaning, I would, I would hope that they could see that they can come to us without fear of reprisal, that there's no one opinion on the board that should drive what the staff do. It's the other way around. They need to be made comfortable again, that they can do what they need. And, and I would extend that even to their own directors, that no, no pressure should come to a staff person from an upper level down. They are to prepare and present, and then we weigh it. I think that there should be made an opportunity, perhaps not with I think that there should be made an opportunity, perhaps not with the interim board, the interim board should, should maybe consider ways that staff could have, a way to report any concerns they have. That's something that, again, I know there's investigations going on, so I wouldn't expect us to tackle that as a board. I would just expect us to reinforce the respect that I think was clear in the years, at least that I served, and the openness for them to feel free to express what they need to express. I further think that it's important for the board to understand that it's a service and a responsibility. It is not an authority, it's not a power. We're given powers, but they're given to do a service for the community. And I think the staff has to see that happening again, knowing that we're all serving together in different capacities.
Thank you. Mr. Seitz?
This is on restoring confidence?
Yes.
The, the first confidence we have to restore is the council's confidence in the board itself. Yes, you'll make the appointments, but we have to earn your confidence by doing the work. And I'd like to say, make the trains run on time, but it's the trains, the planes, the cars, the buses, it's the bikes, it's all of that. And, and we have to take every individual case and go forward with it. The planning board has legislative responsibility to, to do subdivisions, to do site plans, to advise the council. On the applications, we need to get that going, and you need to see that, that our, that our decisions are competently made. And we will do that one plan at a time. It's the only way to earn confidence, is a little bit at a time. With regard to staff, I would, with the greatest degree of modesty, I would hope that my appointment would reassure staff that staff is respected there. I'm a known entity there. I, I think I still have a good reputation there. You can test that. I don't know it, but I think that will help. Certainly, they need to, given the space, to do their jobs. They are professionals. They should be treated as professionals. They should be respected as, as professionals, as everybody up here has said. I think if we handle the world one thing at a time, I think that's Jack Palance in City Slicker. The secret to the world is, it's just one thing. You just have to do it one at a time. And, and that goes with trust and earning trust.
Thank you. Mr. Pinero?
Yeah, I would echo a lot of what has been said today. I think the council, you have made the first step in selecting and having a group of people who are very talented. No matter who you choose, I think some of the people here have, will be contributing a great deal to improving the morale at the planning board and also improving the communication with the council, which is very important. But you've taken the first step. I think the way I have been on the, on different boards is that you, you really have to respect the staff. You have to listen to them. You have to have some empathy. And this is kind of an awkward situation where you, we'll be walking in and we have to find a mechanism so that they can communicate any of their concern, have, you have to create certain stability, consistency, so that they don't feel that, you know, they're going to be in any way losing their, their positions, their jobs. There's not going to be any upheavals, any changes. I agree with a lot of the, what people have said here, that as an interim acting board, you really have to, for the first two or three months, not make too many changes. Be careful about the changes that you make, but consult with the staff and, and be sure that, you know, you, you give them the opportunity for them to talk to you and to get to know them. I have known the board as, when I worked on HOC, we would have quarterly meetings with the, with the board members. And of course, the planning director, the ED would be there. But now you have, you have a new board, so it's, it's, it's going to be very interesting to have those meetings with some of the top staff and, and see what their concerns are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us to our third question. Mr. Seitz, you'll start with this one. What are the most critical issues you believe the board needs to address, other than restoring confidence in the next few months?
It needs to get back on schedule. Again, applicants have rights to have their processes, to have their plans processed. There, there is by virtue of having a board, a moratorium on preliminary plan approvals. You have to get back to that schedule. There are leftover approvals that the, the prior board approved, but the resolutions haven't been done. You have to do that. We have before, the, we, the, the planning board has before the council development, the development approval procedures. I think it just got that this past week. We have to get that through. But, but the biggest thing, of course, in the next three months is the budget. And having reviewed the budget, you, I would want to go through some factors that came up in that review. I want to see how they're doing on vacancies and, and whether they're getting, having the staff there to do their jobs and doing what we could do as the board to help promote that. The budget is probably the biggest thing in the next couple of months. Of course, beyond the applications that come in as applications do, there are at least two master plans underway. We can offer what, what guidance we can during that, but again, leaving the major decisions to the permanent board.
Thank you. Mr. Pinero?
Yes, I think some of the issues is definitely we have to keep the planning board moving on decisions that need to be made within the next two or three months regarding development applications or master plans, sector plans. I mean, some decisions are going to have to be made. However, I feel that I am coming in with no interest. I don't have any conflicts, any, any, I haven't, you know, I'm totally neutral, totally objective. I'm not coming in kind of with some prejudices. There's going to be a learning curve on, on my behalf, because, you know, I've been working with HOC, I have more of a housing perspective, but I'll be listening and participating in the discussions. But, you know, it's not like, for example, looking at the budget, I don't have any idea what the budget of the, of the planning board is, but I am willing to learn. I will sit there and I will try to, like I've done before. I mean, this is something I've learned when I worked at GAO. Many times, you know, we were not, we were not welcome when we would go into an agency or into a program, and we have to learn as much as they did in a short period of time. So I'm willing to learn, and that's why I'm here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Presley?
I certainly echo everything that Mr. Seitz said. From a tactical perspective, there's a lot to be done and some catching up to do, and that, that's a given. But I think beyond that, the interim board should really be strategically preparing for the new board in any way possible. I wouldn't know until, or if I was appointed interimally, if, if certain procedures have changed that might, shouldn't have been changed, you know, just the standards of how the public are able to present, how, if any of that's changed, I, I wouldn't know until I got in. But paying mind to those things to make sure that a new board coming in doesn't have to deal with a lot of that administration that could happen while we would be in that place. So I think those are the two.
Thank you. The next question, Mr. Pinero, we'll start with you. What, what, sorry. What roles should the planning board take in addressing racial equity and social justice issues? How can lessons learned during the council's review of the racial equity and social justice components of Thrive, such as culturally and linguistically proficient outreach and engagement, be incorporated in future planning endeavors?
Yeah, I think that the planning board has to play, has to play a very crucial role in terms of social justice and equity issues. I think that, in a way, they have to, planning is a process, and you have to include communities that have not participated in the past. You have to do outreach. You have to find a way of including them. No matter what you do, when I was at the chair of the HOC, I would meet quarterly with the residents. We would have town hall meetings. In fact, many times, our, me, our board meetings were not at the HOC site. We would have them in different locations, invite different people, and not necessarily to talk about specific issues, but we would listen to them, and they felt that they were participating in the process. I think that's the most important part, that, and again, I, I'd like to see what the planning board has done in terms of the metrics, how they're dealing with the social justice issues and equity issues, and, and see whether it's enough or definitely whether it's been a rumor for, you know, that needs to be improved, and that, that would be the main thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Presley?
When I was on the board, we did start to be very mindful about reaching out to the communities who couldn't, or either they couldn't attend hearings at the board, or they were perhaps intimidated. We included translators. With the Wheaton Plan specifically, I think the minds were open about what people feared, which was, you're going to change our community and take away the small stores, and as you know, that was able to be preserved. I don't know how they're reaching out now and since COVID, but I really did appreciate the staff going out into the communities with translators, going into the different communities, and continuing to do that throughout the, especially the master planning process. So I think that's critical. But also from a development review perspective, that's where we could really be of service, not just, not the interim board, but I believe it's the board's role, to ensure that the development plans, one candidate mentioned gentrification. Well, what's going to happen if we put these new things here? Where do these people move? That's got to be part of the weighing of the, you know, what's important to allow and what has to be put in place, infrastructure and other things to support that. So I don't think a lot of that is going to fall to the interim board, but the interim board can at least determine how the staff is reaching out and set those wheels in motion so that that's a plan, to have translators and people on site to hear what people need to be heard on.
Thank you. Mr. Seitz?
I certainly agree that, that a master plan and a general plan like Thrive is a long-term endeavor. But I also know that, that planning essentially are random steps in a general direction. And each thing you do, you need to consider racial equity. And there are three separate areas, I think, that the planning board has, and they're all very different. One is regulatory, where the applicant comes in, and that is the action in front of you. Nobody in the private, in the public side prompts that action, except through incentives that, that the council might provide. But so, you need to be inclusive for what comes in the door. And of course, there are outreach plans that the, that the planning staff has to come up with all the time. But for regulatory, it's got to be a routine measure. It's got, you got to think about it. For master plans, that's where the, the board would have more oversight on exactly what that outreach plan would, would be, and hopefully it would be inclusive. The real piece of, of the public pie that, that the planning board has is for the parks department, because they, they actually operate in geography. They have individual parks, they, they buy land, they, a little bit operate programs, mostly the recreation department operates the programs. But, but that's where the consideration of racial equity needs to be most pronounced. And it's something that, that they are aware of, and they are measuring parks by how accessible they are to all demographics in the county, including racial minorities. So they have gone some lengths to it. Just one step at a time will get you to the general direction.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So last two questions are fairly straightforward, but do you have interest in serving as chair? We'll start with you, Mr. Pinero.
I don't have any interest in serving as chair.
Thank you.
No.
Thank you.
I have the interest. I have the time. The, the only thing I have on my calendar is going to spring training, and there I should say, if I get offered a contract, I'm staying. So just be aware of that. But, but look, I want to serve. This is an agency that I admire, that I have the greatest respect for, and that I want to help. And however the council thinks I can help, I am happy to do it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Seitz. And then the final question is, are there any potential conflicts, conflicts of interest of which we should be aware? Mr. Pinero?
None for me. The, the only thing that the council should be aware is that I am serving on the Board of Appeals now as a member. So I would have to refine that, and there's only four members right now, which creates a problem if there's a vacancy, because they need four members to vote on some, some of the issues. So you should know that.
Got you. Thank you. Ms. Presley?
No, I have no conflicts, but if it's appropriate, if the president will allow, I have an add-on comment to the last question, in case I don't get appointed. It should be something for consideration. We put the master plans in place, but we don't follow up as a board. There, they don't continue to be brought before us to track. Did that park ever get delivered to the community it was promised to? So I wanted to get that on the record. So whichever board is in place, it should be something that's looked at to, to keep a calendar, to find out, was it delivered on time? If it wasn't delivered, why? And when will it be delivered? But no conflicts.
Thank you.
Conflicts, I own one piece of property in the city of Brockville with my wife. That, that is it for a property. I have no business. My family has no businesses in the county. I, I have some stocks of which I have no control. But that should be no conflict. I do receive a check, and I didn't put this on my state form because they didn't ask it in a way that I understood it. I do receive a check from the employees' retirement system at Park and Plan. And now, that's a closed retirement system. It has not been a conflict with any other prior employee who, who served on the board. The retirement system has dealt with this issue before, but I wanted you to be aware of it.
Thank you. Thank you to all three of you. Thank you to all of our panelists today. We've got a tough decision to make, which is a good thing, because there, there are some really extraordinary, extraordinary candidates, and again, all those that have applied as well. I just want to reiterate three things. One, these are for the temporary positions, that if the temporary members would like to apply for the full terms, they are, have the ability to do so, but being on a temporary position does not give them a leg up. It will be the next council that will determine who this next body will be. This is just a bridge to get us through this challenging time. Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.